I have asked Ms. Rich that there are times in my chairman's address. I said, over these last couple of years through the pandemic, as well as just certain areas that we seem to be talking about year round. It takes the focus a little bit off what we truly do as a county and all the wonderful people that work in it. And I just asked Joy, could at some point we all get together and talk and and go through some of these things? Because I can tell you during the pandemic how proud I was of all of the county workers working through this for public health, keeping the trains running on time, being a full functioning government. And then the pandemic, we hope, is over. But it still happens, you know? When Bill or myself or Jack was chairman, it seemed like we were just the entire time was sucked up by talking about one particular item. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the county manager and have a nice session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. You'll notice that we have with us today many of the leaders from the departments that you're going to hear about. I know that when you and I talked about this, it was important for them to have an opportunity to see you, you know, receiving the information and, you know, that they don't often get that opportunity. So like I said, a number of the leaders are here today to hear your remarks and kind of, you know, reflect on the couple of years that have been, so to speak. We're going to focus on, you know, major accomplishments as well as initiatives moving forward. I will do the section of the departments that report directly to me. And our three assistant county managers will be giving the sections for the departments that report to them.
Awesome. Thank you, Joy.
And I don't know if you want them to come up.
You know what? I'll let you call them up. And so if we have any questions, especially if Tom Galvin has any questions or Steve Giarroto. But yeah, please do.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're going to go ahead and start with the Facilities Management Department. And CJ is here this morning. I think sometimes we forget what a robust, large organization with a big lift that our Facilities Management Department is. But these numbers will give you a little bit of an idea. So when CJ looks at what he's been able to accomplish with his team fiscal year 23 to date, over 50-plus in-house design projects, active capital improvement projects, including ARPA-funded projects, or 33, which is a very large lift. Project requests from departments to do analysis and, you know, some truth-to-concept work on. He's had 184 of those. And major maintenance projects, and you'll see a couple of pictures. When we talk major maintenance, we're usually talking major maintenance at Maricopa County, 217 of those, and 79 signage requests as well. So Supervisor Gates and I were just reflecting on the restack of the 301 building and how it looks. I think this is all part of our, we want our employees to have a great environment here. We've added training facilities, lounge facilities, just overall making this a more hospitable place to work. But this also has been a very heavy lift. And you can see some of the stats associated with the project. They moved almost 1,500 employees, as you well know, having been part of this. Some of those employees moved more than two times. And there were eight buildings that were impacted, 57 department moves, 22 mechanical shutdowns, 13 electrical shutdowns, and 18 plumbing shutdowns. So it's required a lot of logistics and quite a bit of patience and management on part of facilities to deliver all that. So we'll quickly click through some big projects here. So the completion of the MCSO District 2 substation and County Equipment Services Facility. This is a public safety facility, but also has onsite county fueling and onsite car wash, which creates a great synergy. And I believe this is the first time we had done this, but I've gotten a lot of good feedback from those who are in the building. The Southeast Justice Center, you'll be participating in the dedication of that. The last week in March is, we've done this Southwest, and this is the Mirror. City of Mesa, probably we'll probably get a Christmas card from them this year because we're getting out of the Centennial Way Adult Probation Facility. They'll be part of this. So this is really, I think, when you go and visit it, you'll notice what a great project this is. East Valley Animal Care and Control is well on its way to completion in October 2023. I know that a lot of the community is waiting to see this. We're excited about this, and it'll hopefully give us a chance to get out of our existing substandard facility and really put our best foot forward to the community. The Downtown Fuel Station and Car Wash Facility. You remember, we deferred this a bit because we were using this as an exterior outdoor lot for sleeping during the pandemic. But as you can see, it's well on its way, and that's where our Downtown Fuel Station and Car Wash will be. The Central Court 11th floor renovation, you know how we're clicking through these renovations one at a time? You can see where that is, and it's plans to be completed in October of 2023. Emergency Management, you've seen they're finally getting out of the bunker, and this is a mock-up of what their facility will look like and exterior of the building. This is also a very big project, and the start of construction is estimated for April of this year. Southeast Juvenile Court renovation is in design. MCSO District 3 Substation also currently in design. And this is one of these major maintenance projects we were talking about, not exactly like when you get your air conditioner replaced on the roof of your house. So these are behemoth large projects that CJ and his group manage. Same with obviously things like boilers that you never really think about that are a big part of the work that Facilities Management does and really would be considered a very major project anywhere. And then we have a couple of ARPA projects here that I know you're familiar with. The Mesa Public Health Building Acquisition, CJ's group helped with the due diligence on that, as well as helping with the build-out, as well as the Goodyear Public Health Building Acquisition. So that was one of those, a couple of those legacy projects where we were able to take ARPA funding and really make a significant and ongoing improvement to customer service related to public health in those areas. And then this is a list of their other projects not permitted. One of the most exciting things on this list for me is the Durango Jail demolition that has been something we've been considering forever. It is finally, if you go out there, coming down. Now, we had decommissioned it many years ago. And then things like the Central Courts Building 10th Floor renovation, Clerk of the Court Southeast Service Center, something that I know Supervisor Gates is very interested in, exterior improvements to the courtyard and exterior of this building, as well as this plaza in front of the courts are under design at this point. So that's a little bit of a taste of what CJ and our Facilities Management Group has been up to. And with that, we will move into Communications. So I know that you're pretty familiar with the diverse portfolio of what Fields and his group does, but here's a little sampling. Video stories, newsletters, social media is a big part of their focus and a growing part of their focus, press releases, press conferences, and then, you know, managing the media inquiry, press releases, editorials, all those things that they do to support both the appointed departments and your offices. And we'll talk a little bit about the numbers associated with this because it really is pretty impressive. So in FY '22, nearly 100 press releases, 823 media inquiries and records requests, 10,000 hours of videos viewed on YouTube. Mr. Chairman, if you ever wonder if anybody's actually out there listening to us, and the products that our communications staff puts together to create, you know, some knowledge base for the public. They do both public and employee newsletters, 52 weekly newsletters reaching over 61,000 folks, as well as the issues occurrence and the resource to employees. And our website, almost 2 million homepage views and 13.4 million total unique website views. And in terms of social media, as I said, this is obviously a growing line of business for them. In the past 12 months, 45% growth in followers on Twitter for 40,500 followers, Instagram, 55% growth to 8,700 followers, LinkedIn, which is really a great resource to us for finding employees for the county. We have over 23,000 followers there. And Facebook, we've seen an 8.5% growth in fans to 15,000. And then, just to give you some idea about the immense reach that our communications staff really is developing, 661,000 average weekly impressions on Twitter, 884,000 on Nextdoor, which they have been utilizing that space quite a bit. I know it's not without its own perils and vagaries, but we have been able to get some good feedback, particularly in terms of surveys from Nextdoor, 211,000 weekly impressions on Instagram, and 57,200 weekly reach, average weekly reach on Facebook. So some of the major initiatives of Communications. As you well know, because you've lived through all of this, their participation in the Election Command Center was very important, 16 press conferences, 600-plus reporter interviews, which obviously is a lot of work for both the elections recorder staff as well as your communications staff, 550-plus media inquiries between September 26th and November 12th. That's almost staggering, the amount of lift on that. News teams from all over the world were here. And Mr. Chairman, the Election Canvas Board Meeting has actually been viewed 84,000 times. So hopefully there is some level of education occurring there. And then I know a project that's near and dear to all of our hearts and was, a lot of emotional and energy went into this because I think we all determined how important this was to us moving forward. But communications staff, with the help of an outside consultant, led the brand creation and implementation of our new county logo and worked with you as partners through that process. And all of the appointed departments and three elected officials have already implemented this. The implementation is actually ahead of schedule, and I hope you are starting to see our logo a lot of places. I know I am and getting a lot of good feedback and comments about it. So that was a major, major effort. Mr. Chairman?
Joy, I would appreciate any comments from a former chairman because this started in one chairmanship of yours and then ended in another chairmanship of yours. So to see it's, that it's ahead of schedule as we get to implement it, that's great. But it took a long time to be able to get even on a schedule. So Bill?
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate your support of this during your chairmanship. And I think it's great. I mean, I'm getting out there in the community, going to different events, seeing the brand everywhere. I've had people come up to me and comment on it. And the thing that I think we really ought to underline here is not only the adoption by the departments that report up to you, Joy, but by those three other electeds. I mean, that's a key piece. That should, that was no small feat. So I'm grateful to our colleagues, countywide colleagues who've done that. And, you know, brand, we know this, that with, as we go down to millennials and Gen Z, brand is even more important than it is for our generation. And so thank you, Joy, and everybody here who worked on it. I know it was hard. And there's never a perfect time to do a brand rollout. So thank you. I'm looking at Fields and others who said, you got to pull the trigger. And I'm really happy that we did. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, and then one final slide. Communications has been key in marketing county jobs. Hopefully, you've seen a lot of the work that they've done trying to create a message of us being a modern workforce where people want to come and build a career and marketing a lot of the things that we do here that are different than the normal brand of government. So. And Human Resources, Laura's here today. This Workday Implementation, I don't know if any of you in your private enterprises have done HRIS implementation, but they are always behemoths. I think many of us here were here during PeopleSoft and then ADP and now Workday, really, to provide that. You know, they did 12 Workday modules of implementation, including the scariest thing for me was payroll, because there's nothing worse than somebody's either not paid or paid inaccurately. And they managed to execute that while we were dovetailing with a CGI refresh as well. And I think that although there were a couple little nuances and things that I know Laura still would like to see working better, Workday Implementation was a tremendous lift, but also a tremendous success. And so our Human Resources staff deserves some praise for that. And then they did the first open enrollment through it right away, too, and that was also successful. Some of the things that initiatives that you have been very involved in, Human Resources has paved the way with implementation, research, advice to myself and the board about these. But paid parental leave is obviously a very important benefit that we've added to our staff. And it's something I am repeatedly complimented on from our staff about how very important this benefit has been to them. And we are one of the only large government employers doing this, although I think others are starting to follow our lead because it's becoming just basic human care to support people as they're growing their families under your employ. And over 331 employees have utilized the benefits since January 22nd. As I said, we've gotten tremendous feedback about that. And also, you have approved the initial stages of the Early Childhood Education Center. This is another thing, particularly at the County Job Fair, that I heard a lot about employees being grateful for this. And so you can see that they, Human Resources with help from Human Services and CJ's group and Facilities have led us to the point where the next step is final design on that. So hopefully that will be a reality before too much longer. And then the Career Fair. I hope you all had a chance to check it out. Almost 2,300 attendees. I had a great time there, talking to both people who are interested in working at the county and our folks that already were there. We had great representation from the departments as well as the electeds. I think we're seeing a lot of fruits of those labors. We don't know exactly how many yet, but there were, I saw an awful lot of people standing in line with their resumes and being interviewed, interview slots being taken up. So I think it's been a tremendous success and something I hope that you'll support us continuing on next year. And then succession planning, 40% of our directors are eligible for retirement in the next three to five years. This is very important, and Mercer is helping Human Resources with this effort to identify those folks in our departments, their mid-managers, that can be cultivated and grown to be that next level of leader here, so that they're first identified and then they're nurtured and cultivated to gain those skills that are required of executive leadership. And so Human Resources is taking the lead in this and has done a great deal of work to help us find those hidden gems that we know exist out there and having the department heads help us find them as well. And then care.com is something else. I hope you saw the communications video of the employee we had that had taken advantage of both parental leave and then care.com. And you can see the numbers there. Backup days, 43. It's not a tremendous expense, but just knowing that that is there when everything goes wrong. And we all know when you're raising young families, those days happen over and over. Or, you know, you have issues with elder care, that sort of thing, that it's a benefit there to backstop our employees has really been tremendous. And then obviously, the Fitness Center remodel. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from employees about that as well, supporting their wellness efforts. And then the VERTA Diabetes Reversal, I don't know how many of you are familiar with this program, but it has also had a significant impact for our employees. We have 670 employed enrollees. This is a diabetes management program. 61 have been in treatment for more than a year. And you can see the results there, including 8% reduction in weight, 50% reduction in diabetes medications, and a 1.4 points reduction in blood sugar. So this is really also making a significant difference in the lives of our employees. And then Office of Enterprise Technology, this single sign-on for me was a game changer. I hope you all feel the same way, but just allowing us to not have that stack of post-its or whatever and trying to remember, you know, what we're logging on to and all that, and particularly during COVID, when a lot of us were working remotely, has been a real game changer. And so a big thank you to OET continuing to push that out. Operations Customer Service, you can see their uptimes here in terms of platforms and applications. If they're not at 100%, they are at nearly 100%. In an organization as large as ours, that's really remarkable. And I think some of us can remember in the not-too-distant future, when those numbers were much, much lower, it was nothing to have frequent outages. But I think now we all, with confidence, know that the applications and the platforms are going to be ready for our daily use as well as our customers. And you can see the customer satisfaction numbers down there from OET are just phenomenal. And then they've also been key players in the digital transformation, Onbase DocuSign, CGI Workday Implementations, as well as Esri. And really, I just want to commend them to their support of all of us during COVID. I mean, we were able to stand up, both our employees being able to work and our customers doing business with us in an unprecedented environment. And OET was the backbone that allowed us to be able to do that. And then cybersecurity, as you well know, we are a frequent target, given how high-profile Maricopa County is. And if you get a chance, I want to make sure that you get a chance to tour some of our cybersecurity facilities in OET with Lester and others because it truly is impressive. And they are extremely vigilant and always educating all of us on what they're doing and what we need to be doing to remain safe. And then finally, cloud computing, which is also the backbone of our ability to serve our customers and employees, particularly during COVID, and part of a customized approach that they are really employing on cloud computing. And these partners allow us to be able to do that. And then the Public Safety Radio System that finally, after years and years and years, came to completion, a major, major capital project for OET. And then Government Relations, and I'll go through this rapid quickly so I don't start getting into other folks' time. I think we sometimes lose sight of how complex government relations work is. They go far beyond lobbying the legislature on bills during session. You can see here that they worked with Senator Kelly's office through the congressionally directed spending request process, or what we commonly refer to as earmarks for funds for the Army Corps of Engineer feasibility study of cave buttes. And that has been included in the FY '23 appropriations. They are constantly working with Senator Sinema and Senator Kelly on air quality issues, which we all know have significant potential to impact the economic development potential for the Valley. And you can see that Senators Kelly and Sinema signed on to a letter supporting rules that were submitted to EPA, as well as communicating with the congressional delegation in regards to changes for non-attainment standards for PM 2.5. But I will tell you, particularly in these regulatory spaces, that it can have such a significant impact even beyond air quality, waters of the US, those types of things. Government Relations is on the forefront of making sure that our message is being heard. And then they, obviously, I found this very interesting when we were putting this presentation together. I was unaware of this, that they're working with NACO. There's a federal fellowship initiative that includes congressional staff, White House officials, other federal agency representatives. And part of this group is going to be coming out. Our government relations folks are working to have them tour our McTech facility, which I think you know will be of very big interest to them, as well as Lake Pleasant. That is a federal partnership and further allowing us to show off what Maricopa County is doing here. And then there's a number of legislative accomplishments. I'm not going to belabor them here because I'm starting to get into other people's time. But you know just how entrenched they are, particularly this time of year, integrating with their consultancy, working with you all to deploy as necessary when different legislative issues arise down at the Capitol. And then finally, we lose sight that our government relations staff or the folks that deal with County Supervisors Association, ACO, League of Cities and Towns, MAG, Valley Metro, they make sure that we have a seat at the table with all of these organizations. And I often hear, I see them everywhere. So even though there's only three professional staff in that group, they really are everywhere. So I will go ahead and turn the presentation over to Leanne.
Thank you, Joy.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk about our departments and their accomplishments. I have a fabulous team, and I've put together a list of what I would consider for each of my departments, either their one or two most significant accomplishments or initiatives this year. So I will start with, oh, and I'm low on pictures and videos.
Thank you.
We'll start, yes, I think that goes without saying here with number one, having on words. So our most significant accomplishment in the medical examiner's office has to do with stabilizing the forensic pathologist workforce. So forensic pathologists are subspecialty-trained physicians. There is a national deficiency of approximately 600 of them. So we in Maricopa County have to set ourselves apart from the other jurisdictions recruiting these physicians so that we can fill our positions. Pay does not, we can increase pay, and every other jurisdiction is right there behind us doing the same thing. So we have to find different ways to differentiate ourselves. And Dr. Johnson and his team have come up with a multi-pronged solution dating back to 2017. So this is six years' worth of effort shown here. The first thing that we did is we put in a medical examiner loan repayment plan in 2017. That plan repays up to $25,000 a year in student debt loan, up to $100,000 in lifetime benefit. So first of its kind in the nation, and we're really proud of that program. It did seem to move the needle on our recruitment at the time. Of course, other jurisdictions kind of fell in line if we're doing something similar. So the next thing we focused on is getting full accreditation through the National Association of Medical Examiners. So that's their accredited body. In 2018, they achieved for the first time ever full accreditation. What that means to our staff and to other potential staff is that we recognize the standards of that industry. We meet those standards, and we don't expect our staff to work outside of those standards. So it's been very impactful. Then during the pandemic, we were able to put two different initiatives in place that really helped to supplement our forensic pathology workforce. So as I said, those are some of our highest-paid and highest-trained staff in the entire county. We want to make sure the work they do is work that no one else can do. So what the team has done is identified a couple areas where we can bring in supplemental staff to help our forensic pathologists. The first of those is a physician assistant program. So this, too, is a fairly novel approach to medical examiner work. Not every case that is a jurisdictional case for the ME's office requires an autopsy. About 20 or 25% of them can be done without bringing the body in and really doing a review of paperwork. And so these two physician assistants take on those cases where the body isn't actually admitted to the office. They review the records, they draft the report, and then a forensic pathologist reviews their work. And that's reduced our workload on our forensic pathologists by about 20%. We've also put in place a Locum's Tenants Program. This is not uncommon in the medical field. Essentially, it's bringing in medical examiners from other jurisdictions to pick up what I would call shift work. So they might come in on a weekend, perhaps during a weekday, especially when we either have vacancies or we see an uptick in our caseloads. So they relieve our medical examiners. They take on only non-criminal cases. And then the last of these is our most recent initiative that's underway right now. This is five or six years in the making. It's our forensic pathology fellowship program. Right now, we are in the early stages of the interview process that goes into that matching process. We will have two fellows starting in the summer of 2024. What we know about a fellowship program is that for those jurisdictions that have one, it is their number one recruitment tool. So we are excited to bring on fellows and then hopefully a year later, make them part of our permanent staff. And then I think it's important to note, too, the medical examiner's office operates in an environment of continuous improvement. So since 2016, we've seen a 37% increase in annual caseloads. We have not increased our staff by that much, but we have at the same time seen a 64% decline in how long it takes to turn around ME reports. And that's because there's just a constant fine-tuning of their processes in that office. All right, moving along to the Office of Budget and Finance. The most significant thing that Cindy Gels and her team have done, I think, in the last year to help the county long-term is their efforts at reducing long-term debt and future costs. So we have significant pension debt for both our public safety and our detention pension programs, $650 million as of about a year ago. And it's interesting to note that about 80% of our payments each year goes towards that accrued liability, not towards current expenses. So it's really heavily weighted towards paying down that debt. Why this was an issue is the growth of those contributions to those pension plans was really outpacing the growth in our new revenues and the growth in our expenditure limitation. outpacing the growth in our new revenues and the growth in our expenditure limitation. So the trajectory on this was not good with as much money as we put towards these plans. But last year, we had a kind of a confluence of opportunities. We had attractive interest rates. I think we all wish we were back there in that respect today. We had one-time resources available to pay off that short-term debt, and the ability to pay that down could significantly reduce our pension payments moving forward. So the board approved issuance of $500 million in short-term-fledged revenue bonds. We used our cash on hand to pay those off. That is going to bring those plans to a 75% funded ratio. And just for a matter of kind of perspective, the detention pension plan funded ratio was 57%, and public safety was 47%. So it really changed the game in terms of the funded ratio on both of those plans. We'll have a 75% reduction in accrued liability when our payments are done, and we will achieve an annual savings of nearly $31 million. I have a couple different initiatives with our Human Services Department. Human Services, as you know, has been one of the primary, I guess, benefactors or utilizers of our American Rescue Plan Acts, and they've really put those funds to good use. There's a lot of information on this slide. So we've put significant funds into strengthening the housing continuum, and by significant, I mean over half a billion dollars, all funding sources. That is the biggest number I think I've ever been able to report to the board outside of something like the justice system. I have to put on my glasses to actually see my notes on this slide. So the housing continuum, we talk about that. It's everything from housing and emergency shelter all the way up to market value homes and everything in between. It's making sure people have a roof over their heads and a stable place to live. Just to go over our investments quickly, we've put almost $18 million into homelessness, almost $96 million into emergency shelter, $6 million into transitional housing, $10 million into community housing, $100 million into affordable housing, and a focus on our affordable housing has been specialty units for seniors, veterans, families, people experiencing homelessness, and people with disabilities, so people with barriers to employment or people living in fixed-income situations. We've put $32 million towards affordable homeownership, $38 million towards market value homes, and over $205 million towards keeping people in their homes. And that's been through rental and utility assistance, eviction prevention, and landlord engagement programs. I will not go through every single bullet point on this list here, but I'll hit a few of the highlights that I think are really impactful. We've served 11,400 people across all shelter types on the homeless end of this continuum. We have a 70% positive exit rate from our county bridge housing, and so what that means is not only do we know where people are going, but they are going towards someplace where they have stable housing. We've served 45,000 households through rental and utility assistance, and I think something that's important to note here is almost 70% of our applicants today continue to be first-time applicants to this program. So this is not people coming back to the well again and again. We usually can get those people other services so they don't have to continue to receive emergency rental assistance. And then we are in the process of creating 4,500 new affordable rental and home units. All right. Workforce is another area of significant, both resource and people resource investment within human services. We've invested almost $45 million into workforce development initiatives. That is on top of the roughly $20 million we get per year from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. So this is a significant above-and-beyond investment. And there are a variety of different programs. So we support job seekers, especially those people who have barriers to employment, apprenticeships. We are nationally recognized for our apprenticeship programs, but we have invested even more into those programs. College career and credential programs, and so those are really aimed at not only getting people college degrees, but also getting them credentials so they can obtain higher levels of employment. I'll talk about the Graduate Nurse Practice Readiness Program. It's one of my personal favorites. And then we also provide direct assistance to employers to make sure they can hire the people they need to do the work. So some of the highlights of these investments, this is, I have two favorites here, I guess, this partnership with Grand Canyon University. Grand Canyon University is training people to be electricians, which is really unique in that private four-year college space. They have 40 students, four of whom are women, and on average, their participants in this program are 20 years younger than other programs. So we're getting people early in their career lifespan, so hopefully they can have a whole career in that space. We're working with St. Joseph the Worker on homeless employment. They've been able to serve 4,200 clients to date at an average rate of 1,658 per hour. I think we have a great program with Banner Health, so not a huge footprint yet, 2014 members, but what they're doing is they're looking at employees who are in entry-level non-healthcare jobs and getting them into healthcare-related training so that they can have career progression at their employer. And then lastly, like I said, another one of my favorites, Centers Practice Readiness and Preceptor Training Program. This initially as a pilot project involved 53 students. We worked with the Community College District and two universities, 63 preceptors, and then six agencies, two of those being our own correctional health services and Value Wise Health, one of our partners, to essentially make sure that nurses, upon completion of their education, get the training they need so they can actually practice in their field. And we've recently moved this into a full-blown program from a pilot project. Just a couple other notes here. The graph on the lower right-hand corner shows our achievements for median income earnings. You'll see that for youth, glasses, for youth, our goal, and these are for quarterly employment, quarterly earnings. Our goal was $4,900 for youth. We've achieved over $6,300. And for adults, our goal was just over $7,500, and we have achieved almost $11,000. So we're blowing our own goals kind of out of the water, which is great. Moving on to correctional health services. So I feel like I read every single day in the newspaper something related to the opioid crisis or the fentanyl crisis, and our jails are certainly no exception to that. In fact, that population is probably even more affected by the opioid crisis than the general population. From 2021 to 2022, we saw a 42% increase in the number of jail-based patients who are under observation for opioid withdrawal. And a few other statistics, during that same time horizon, we saw a 38% increase in opioid medical provider visits and a 13% increase in the Vipratrol and Methadone orders. So clearly, this population is experiencing an increased usage of opioids and the after-effects of that. The county was fortunate to be able to receive substantial funding through a variety of opioid settlements. The first investment that we recommended and the board supported was services for our jail-based population. I'm very thankful for that. What we've been able to do with those funds is hire seven addiction treatment-related physicians. I learned a new word, addictionologist. It is a field, it is a specialty field. We have hired two of them. We have nurse practitioners and a physician assistant, and these people are specially-trained to serve people who are going through opioid use withdrawal. We're also working to develop a program to provide patients who have been diagnosed with opioid use disorder, a supply of bridge medication, so that when they're released from the jail, they have that medication in hand and can get to community-based treatment before going through withdrawal or hopefully seeking drugs again.
Do we chart that? I mean, is there a way of charting that back? Like, here you go, here's, and then what happens to those people? Do we look and say like, hey, did they stick with it? Or?
Mr. Chairman, I hope so. We haven't quite, we haven't launched this yet. We're in the planning stages of it. We'd have to be able to link to those outpatient providers or services that they're accessing, but we certainly hope to be able to do that. Public health, so I'm not going to talk about COVID-19. Yay, that's a good thing. But one of the things that we certainly recognized during the pandemic is inequities in healthcare access. So we are a better and healthier community if all people have access to basic healthcare in their communities and at prices that are affordable. One of the ways they can do this is through our very own public health clinic, where we provide women, infant, children, federal program that we provide at a local level here. We provide immunizations, STD testing and treatment, and then vital records, although that's not a clinical service. At some point in your life, you need access to vital records, either birth or death records, and that's a service that we want to make sure is available in the community. We currently operate one public health clinic for the entirety of Maricopa County. So I think we can recognize that is kind of woefully insufficient. Our current clinic is on Roosevelt Street, right here in downtown Phoenix. But with ARPA funds, we have been able to purchase three other sites. Joy highlighted two of them earlier, what the work facilities is doing. Our site in Glendale is slated to open December of this year. Our Goodyear site should be opening in June of 2024, and then our Mesa site should be opening in January of 2025. And we typically can bill either insurance or Medicaid for services, so we make the capital investment into these programs, and then typically, we can find other funding sources to pay for our operations. And then continuing with healthcare equity, the other way, or another way that people have, can find access to healthcare is using federally qualified healthcare centers. So F Q H Cs, that is a federal designation. You have to demonstrate that you provide care to people regardless of their ability to pay. So we have been able to invest $52 million of ARPA funds into an F Q H C initiative. It has benefited a total of eight organizations, but within those eight, 13 projects at 19 different locations. And those awards range from half a million to $7.5 million. They are funding new and expanded locations, youth services, dental pharmacy and telehealth services, HIV services, and then also opioid use disorder treatment services. And you can see the map there of all the different locations. I think we've done a good job, our public health team, of making sure that those are dispersed throughout the community quite nicely. And then lastly, our emergency management department. So emergency management has taken the initiative over the last several years of really taking the lead in a program called Securing the Cities. It's a grant-funded program. We've received about $4.2 million in grant funding to date. But really, what this program is designed to do is enhance radiation detection capabilities, working with state and local police and fire agencies. So we specifically, this grant provides four types of radiation detection equipment. It funds operator training. We receive assistance for our standard operating procedures and plan development, and then continued oversight and support over the overall mission. To date, our partners are City of Buckeye, Town of Gilbert, Phoenix, Scottsdale, Tempe, Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, our own sheriff's office, the Department of Public Safety, the Department of Emergency Military Affairs, and Arizona Department of Health Services. And you've seen these agenda items come up. We continue to add to this list on a regular basis, so we're excited about continuing to expand the footprint of this program. And with that, I think I'm turning it over to Jen.
Before we lose, before we lose LeAnn, any questions for LeAnn? Okay, perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. Good morning. So I oversee seven departments in the Ombudsman Office, and I generally describe my departments as licensing, permitting, and inspecting. But perhaps it can be more accurately described as making connections. My departments, for example, P and D, through permitting connects somebody to a new home. Through animal care and control, connects a lost pet to a new family. Or through McDOT, connects you from where you are to where you're going. So these departments have a tremendous amount of accomplishments, but I'm focusing just today on accomplishments that align with the strategic goal, leveraging technology to improve customer service, supporting sustainable economic development, and then also making sure we develop and retain our skilled and diverse workforce. So kicking off with air quality, which is headed by Phil McNeely, and they're responsible for inspecting, permitting, and ensuring that their air quality is good in Maricopa County. And they're doing a tremendous job. A significant accomplishment was in 18 months, they permitted two semiconductor, internationally significant semiconductor facilities in Maricopa County. And with the Intel campus, the Ocatillo campus, they had to, Intel had to get a new Title V permit, and that was to, because they were going to be considered a major source of ozone precursors. And so the Federal Clean Air Act requires that Intel identify on a pound-for-pound basis offsets for its emissions. And air quality had to act quickly and from scratch, developed and evaluated new methods for certifying those emission reduction credits. So that was incredible. And their innovative permitting approach ensured that we could bring thousands of high-paying jobs to Maricopa County and also reduced our reliance on the fragile international supply chain for these semiconductor chips, which are cars or computers and are important for national security.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say thank you so much for that effort and note that this is, although Intel was mentioned, this is from T S M C in District Three.
We wanted to hit both.
If you're going to mention that before, and I know we're heading the thing, but Phil McNeely's in the audience. Phil, thank you. That represents your staff that jumped to, I mean, this is important to Maricopa County. So thanks for that. That's a lot of skilled labor getting thrown in a great way, so thank you.
Well, and I'll just say thank you as well, because Jen's department's got involved in many issues to help us get through the Intel expansion.
Thank you.
Stop your territorialism in your districts, okay? It's a good job for the county.
Air quality also does, as I mentioned, education and outreach and incentive programs. Their education programs targeted at kids, have won numerous awards, including the Arizona SciTech Institute's STEM Partner of the Year. And then the incentive programs include administering the State Diesel Admissions Reduction Program, partnering with businesses and school districts to upgrade to school buses and cleaner fleet vehicles, which saved 2,700 gallons of fuel and prevented thousands of tons of admissions. Then also, there's incentive programs for our fireplace retrofit and our fire pit retrofit, which converts wood-burning fireplaces and fire pits to gas or propane. And then also, we have a garden equipment replacement program, which takes gas-powered garden equipment and replaces it with electric. You can see those numbers there, they're pretty impressive. Prevented 22 tons of VOCs, 280 tons of carbon monoxide, 21 tons of P M two point five. So tremendous accomplishments. Moving on to animal care and control, we have over 150 staff that manage two open admissions shelters right now, helmed by Bill Wiley temporarily and soon-to-be Debbie McKnight, who is executive on loan to us from the Arizona Humane Society, which is very exciting. And 2023 is going to be a big year for animal care and control. As Joy mentioned, they're going to be moving into their new East Shelter. They have already developed a transition plan to move in the fall and hope to have their grand opening celebration by December 1st. Other initiatives include reinvigorating our partnership with Bissell Charities to sponsor free adoption events, where Bissell reimburses us $50 per adoption to offset our costs. And that could include Flo, who's pictured on this slide, wanted to pitch a dog that's up for adoption. Flo is currently thriving in a foster home while she waits for her new family. And then on the flip side of adoptions, we have numerous efforts to prevent dogs from entering our shelter, which saves money and saves lives. And we have an agenda item for the board's consideration this week for $1 million in ARPA funds to fund spay and neuter over two years. We're enhancing our return-to-owner program, and we are also kicking off a stay-with-owner program, supporting people to keep their pet, and also outreach to people experiencing homelessness that have pets. I think the numbers say it all, though. You can see our impact. We cared for 18,468 animals entering our shelter last year. Over 2,200 were returned home, 11,622 were adopted, and about 2,300 were transferred to our partner organizations for adoption. This resulted in a save rate of about 94%, one of the best in the country. And then this is, represents a lot of great work by a lot of great people, our staff and our community partners. But I think you're all aware, people But I think you're all aware, people are very passionate about animals. There are a lot of voices and opinions on social media. The good news, though, is that our communications department did a recent audit and found that 82% of those comments on social media are either neutral or positive. We went to Environmental Services, which is headed by Darcy Cover. This is a very diverse department that does everything from restaurant inspections to public pool inspections, to monitoring drinking water and storm water, to regulating wastewater, to controlling vectors and managing our county's landfills. And in the last year, Environmental Services has been really focused on conducting more business virtually. We are proud to announce that Darcy's team was able to get to over 90% of applications available digitally. They have improved their web payment portal, resulting in a 30% increase in customers paying online. They created an online toolkit for food establishments to prevent foodborne illnesses. And even though that all the technological advancements are great, people are still really important. And they are amplifying the efforts that Joy highlighted in that HR is spearheading. And they've developed a supervisor peer training to help support and grow the next generation of Environmental Services leadership. And these numbers are pretty wow. 83,000 permits in fiscal year '22, 71,000 inspections. And then our vector control staff, they are really the unsung heroes of the fight the bite in Maricopa County. And at night, when all of us are sleeping, they're out there fogging. And they have treated over 410,000 acres and have set 42,000 traps for mosquito surveillance. And then switching gears, as I mentioned, Environmental Services is a very diverse department. They are responsible for disposing of waste tires. And years ago, under Joy's leadership, established a partnership with CRM of America, who in the last year has recycled 72,000 tons of waste tires into crumb rubber. And also Environmental Services team has worked to divert 6,200 other tons of material from landfills through recycling.
Okay, I just wanted to ask about that. So Joy, you've been here for a lot of years. And I do remember many, many years ago, front page stories about about tires being dumped out in the desert. Take us through what has transpired in that time, for where we were then and where we are now.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think there were a couple of pretty significant incidents where we determined that our tires never really left or went away. So, you know, we would contract with folks to dispose of those tires. And unfortunately, sometimes they did not make them to appropriate locations to dispose of. And they were also located in landfills. There, I'm sure you've heard the terms tire fires that are very difficult to put out. So no matter where they wound up, they were never truly gone. So the idea was is that why couldn't they be recycled and turned into crumb rubber? And so we terminated our agreements with the landfills, entered into agreement with Barry, and I can't remember his last name from CRM. And it was somewhat of a leap of faith at the time that this person could actually take the whole valley's tires and and create crumb rubber out of them and then, you know, sell those to, you know, they wind up in in roads, children's playgrounds, that sort of thing. But that was really the idea, and it's turned out to be tremendously successful. We do not have a landfill presence. All of our tires essentially are given or, you know, processed through CRM and become a useful product and are recycled. So that's the genesis of that.
And if anyone's interested in a tour, last year, Darcy Blanca and I took a tour. It is amazing what they do. They run a great operation. So the flood control district, they have since 1959 have been identifying flood hazards, building and constructing and maintaining dams, channels, and basins. They maintain over 22 dams. Their their structures can be easily identified, some iconic structures such as Indian Bend Wash, and other discrete structures like the dams that are on the north side of I-10 that you think, what are those when you're driving out to California? But under Mike Fulton's leadership, in the last year, they have they have embraced a culture of continuous improvement. They have done a continuous improvement event, looking at almost every part of the flood control district operation to figure out how we can better partner with our cities and also get more projects in the ground cheaper and more efficiently. They have launched project and permitting dashboards. They, with the board's support, revamped the approach to partnering with cities, including adjusting our cost share rate and increasing the amount that flood control will fund for Small Projects Assistance Program, which are very popular local flood control projects. They have completed, as I mentioned, process mapping for all their major functions, which expected a 48% decrease in study timelines, which is impressive. And then, under Mike's leadership, implemented employee-driven culture and continuous improvement. I think 160 staff are now Six Sigma Yellow Belts and 18 employees are Green Belts. But perhaps, and tagging up to the last bullet, the most important accomplishments are the projects that they do and also the work they helped for Gila Bend to recover from the 2021 flood. And I have a quick video that highlights some of our key projects. And so planning.
Before and before we leave that topic, Mike Fulton is back there joining us. Mike, thank you for your entire staff and your hard work. I know that when I first was appointed to this job, I had a former legislator want to sweep all of the flood control money, saying like, we don't have a, with this is Arizona, we don't have problems with floods. It's like, well, the reason why we don't have problems with floods is because of the hard work that goes on year after year after year to prepare us for torrential rains. And I know, I always feel good at the results of what your team does, because we've had some storms lately and we haven't seen flooding on the front page. So thank you. Please let your team know that we appreciate it and keep it keeping us out of the news. I appreciate that.
And under Tom Ellsworth's leadership, the Planning and Development Department does land use planning, entitlements, permitting, and code enforcement for unincorporated Maricopa County. And it operates as a 100% paperless department. And to help people navigate a virtual environment, they also launched the county's first live chat option, which has received just tremendous survey feedback. Over 94% of the people were said that the service was excellent. And then they are, the Planning Development Department is accustomed to leading contentious and complex public hearings. And they have also shepherded, to that point, have shepherded two tax amendments in the last year through the public hearing process on group homes and updating for digital billboards. And in addition, they have received, led the process and received board approval for an updated building code.
Why didn't you look at me when you said complex and contentious?
I'm gonna let it go.
And the P and D is actually one of the busiest departments in the county, including the city. So 300,000 people that live in unincorporated Maricopa County. And they also do the permitting for county-owned buildings and Valley Wise's hospitals and clinics. And in 2022, they issued over 19,000 permits for a valuation of $1.3 billion. And the average turnaround time for the review of all those permits was just 14 days. This represents a 19% increase in the number of permits since 2020. The same with planning cases, 728 were reviewed and processed in 2022, a nearly 26% increase since 2020. And all these permits mean a lot of inspections, over 130,000 in 2022, 99.83% of which were conducted the same day as scheduled. And real estate, this is led by Alex Smith, who's here as well. And this is the team behind the scenes in acquiring space for people and then the land for flood control and transportation. So for example, Joy and Leanne mentioned the acquisition of the new public health clinics. That was real estate working behind the scenes to locate two off-market properties and acquire them on a quick timeframe. And 2022, real estate also piloted a new approach to marketing our hard-to-sell excess properties. Mainly flood control excess properties are hard to sell since they have some serious development constraints. Through this new approach, five of the seven properties that are in the pilot are scheduled for auction. Two have already sold with $1 million in sales to date. And this also takes it off our maintenance rolls, saving money long term. Also launched a remote online notarization. And in transportation, they build and maintain 2,500 miles of roads countywide. And McDOT is at the cutting edge of technology. For many years, they've operated the Anthem Testbed in District 3. And then this year, they've employed technology to even more efficiently maintain our roads by launching Cartograph. Cartograph is an asset management tool that's GIS-based. So in 2022, McDOT inspected all of their entire paved road network in under eight months. That data goes into Cartograph to inventory our road network, to provide real-time data that we use to schedule maintenance. And then it also analyzes the most cost-effective ways for pavement preservation. And then notified McDOT expands our crew of road inspectors by allowing the public to identify and submit issues with our roads that they see, such as potholes, trash, missing signs. And that is an app that's on your mobile phone, super easy to use. It's been a tremendous success. And all those maintenance requests get fed directly into Cartograph and then assigned out for work. And as I mentioned also on the Environmental Services slide, technology is nothing without the people. And McDOT is amplifying HR's efforts by launching its inaugural Leadership Academy to grow the next generation of leaders at McDOT. And it also has a highly successful mentorship program that in its seven years of existence, 60 people have participated, and one-third of those folks have had promotional opportunities. And we have Jesse Gutierrez, who is currently leading McDOT and is our county engineer in in the audience today. And I think the proudest accomplishment that I think Jesse would also agree is that in 2022, they delivered 100% of their transportation improvement program, which is up from 60% just eight years ago. And let's take a look at a few of those projects. First, I think you gave us a sneak peek to this one in D1, Old Price Road, which connects to the Intel facility and completed construction of March 28, 2022. In District 2, this is very exciting, the Gilbert Road Bridge. It's all-weather crossing to connect Mesa to the communities in the Northeast and the Sub River Pima Indian Community. Started construction at the end of November, and we're anticipating it to be completed in early 2005. And in District 3, solving an issue on Skunk Creek Crossing, which has been a real challenge for emergency access during flood events, as you can see in this video. This is something the New River community is very excited about. Hope to, we're starting real estate acquisition and construction in 2026. If this one is familiar to you, Chairman. We were able to have a grant. Deer Valley Road Bridge. Does cross power for you. And then in District 5, Lower Buckeye Road, from 71st Avenue to 67th, road widening to address the public safety issues there. Scheduled completion in December of 2022. I would like to just wrap up with looking ahead to 2023. Under leveraging technology, we're implementing MC permitting. We apply for a permit anywhere, anytime with the regulatory departments. All the regulatory departments, it's one portal going in with map-based capabilities, mobile application, and real-time dashboards. We're also digitizing all of our real estate docs. Currently, they're stored as hard copies or in a shared drive with no search function for keywords. And then we're also employing new software to automate our rooftop solar reviews, which will free up staff from doing other reviews. And under supporting sustainable economic development, County P and D is going to be initiating an update to the White Tanks Grand Avenue area plan, which was last updated 23 years ago. This is the area that has the most growth in our county. And it's important to update the policies related to land use growth and transportation to meet the needs of the folks that are moving here. Air quality, and the second one, which is very exciting, air quality, working with Equipment Services is develop, leading the effort to develop a plan to convert our fleet to electric vehicles. Once implemented, this is going to save us money in fuel, maintenance, and also improve air quality, which dovetails nicely to a very important initiative Phil's team is leading in conjunction with government relations, is Emission Reduction Program. Maricopa County is likely to be reclassified by the EPA as serious nonattainment for ozone in 2025. That lowers the permitting threshold for major sources from 100 tons of ozone precursors to 50. I believe Taiwan Semiconductor was just under 100. It also requires new sources to attain 1.2 tons of emission credits for every ton of emissions permitted. So that's challenging to obtain those emission credits. So air quality is developing regulations and standards and working with government relations to obtain EPA approval to create and to create these emission reduction credits for a wider variety of sources, such as electrification of commercial fleets, to ensure that we continue that robust economic growth that this county has enjoyed. So thank you very much for your time. And I just wanted to say thank you again to my team, who has made all these accomplishments and have done a tremendous job.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions for Jen? Great, thank you, Jen.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the best for last or hurry it up. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about all the hard work that the departments have done. I know we haven't been able to do this in quite some time, and it means a lot. It means a lot. The first thing I would like to do is just kick it off with a video. I thought it was well done, and then I can give you some of the highlights. So in the video, they highlighted their their commitment to teamwork, and they have done a lot of great work. Specifically, one of the major accomplishments is that. Specifically, one of the major accomplishments is that they have overhauled their new vehicle onboarding process. And to just show you, in the past FY21, '22, they had a hundred and eighty-seven vehicles come through annually, and in this year, they're expected four hundred. So they have really been able to embrace continuous improvement and really start getting these new vehicles equipped and out to our customers quickly. I have to, well, I don't have to, but I should give a shout-out to Air Quality. They helped Equipment Services make this video. Equipment Services doesn't have their own PIO, and they're the silent heroes. You don't hear about Equipment Services unless something breaks. And so I wanted to say thanks to Phil for lending his team. The other accomplishment that we wanted to highlight was the fact of they were successfully in removing the underground fuel tanks. That was huge, and it has eliminated all of the environmental contaminant risk that's associated with those. Equipment Services, as it has been mentioned previously, is partnering closely with FMD for development of electric vehicle stations, as well as Air Quality, so we can really maintain the impact of what we're doing with electric vehicles and reducing our reliance on fossil fuels in our fleet. So just going kind of alphabetically, so not by order of importance. The Library District. The Library District partnered with Public Health during COVID. They had contact delivery. Actually, we had employees tossing the COVID tests into car windows. I thought it was pretty good. Started a point system, but no MBA takers yet. But they distributed, I think, gosh, over a hundred and twenty thousand free test kits to their patrons. They've also wanted to identify that they have continually increased their participation in the summer reading program. Last year, they increased that participation by seventy-nine thousand folks, and they've increased their cardholders over last year by twenty thousand. So they continue to make those connections with the community. We also had two new libraries open, the Goodyear Library and the El Mirage Library. So very happy that those are successful and going strong. Conversely, after twenty years of operating the Surprise Libraries, they have decided to self-operate. And so the Surprise Libraries, we are in partnership with them and supporting them with their technology needs to have a successful transition at the end of this fiscal year. For Initiatives, they are working on developing digital library cards, so that the library cards can, this method will remove barriers, allow people to get those cards more quickly, and have immediate access to resources. They're also working on a pretty ingenious valley-wide book-sharing program. So it won't matter what library system you go to, if they don't have a particular resource and we do, we can get it to them. So I thought that was pretty impressive. They're constantly thinking about new programs and new ways to provide services to resources to the community. Parks and Recreation. You guys have been briefed on the Spur Cross Conservation Area Land Acquisition. That's a mouthful. But as you know, that we were so proud to be able to purchase the additional thirty acres out in Cave Creek. It borders Districts Two and Three, and this purchase is going to further protect those scenic vistas and prevent vehicles from accessing that conservation area. The other accomplishment is the whole Vulture Mountain Recreation Area Development. So this iconic mountain range is located next to the recently acquired Haciapa River Preserve, just outside of Wickenberg in District Four. That's not a suck-up, Mr. Chairman.
Taken as such, but that's good.
Okay, excellent. Excellent, and it's working. So we are constantly looking at expanding our resources and our ability to connect people with nature. In May of 2022, construction began on Phase One of the project, and Phase One will be completed in the fall of this year. Phase Two is scheduled for completion in the spring of 2025. And this will add recreation facilities, including a state-of-the-art nature center. This park will host hundreds of thousands of visitors annually, and everyone's very excited about it. One of the ongoing initiatives is the natural resource programs. You know, they had over two-point-seven million visitors last year to their various parks, and caring for the land is their number-one priority. So they have developed three different programs in order to try to effectuate this preservation. The invasive species are a significant threat to the health of our park systems. So they created Desert Defenders Program, and they've enlisted help from partners and volunteers to assist with the identification of invasive species, mapping, and then removing all those weeds. And I asked them if they could come to my house, and RJ said no. So just kind of letting you know. But they are really focused in on making sure that those areas don't get taken over by those invasive species. The EcoBlitz is a popular citizen science program that engages the public to learn more about the park's biodiversity while providing real-time species data for decision-making. And then FIRE. We all know that with all the rains comes the growth, and then we are at risk. So our FIRE Fuel Reduction Program has enabled us, the parks, to collaborate with partners to assess which areas need to be attended to most quickly. And so collectively, the parks program provides healthier environments within the parks and preserves the natural heritage for future generations. Moving forward, hopefully, to Procurement Services. We're proud to announce one of their major accomplishments is receiving the 2022 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award by the National Procurement Institute. They were recognized for their procedures. And as a chairman's initiative last year, another accomplishment is the Small and Local Business Advocacy Program that was stood up. As of right now, over thirty small businesses have signed up for that program. And the Office of Procurement, they will go out to chambers and various different associations to try to get the word out, so we can make doing business with the county easier. As a lead agency for national purchasing cooperatives, Maricopa County has negotiated national contracts with companies such as Home Depot, HD Supply, Safewear, and others that are then available for over twelve thousand registered state and local governments to tie to. Last year, the county's general fund received over a million dollars in administrative fees, rebates, and revenues, and through revenue sharing through contract negotiations and partnership. So a lot of people don't realize, I didn't, before procurement became one of my departments, that they do set up those contracts to be able to give back. As far as their initiatives going forward, they're looking to improve bid sync periscope and to get a system, whether it's an upgraded version or a new system, to help expedite and create more transparency and make the process easier for our customers. Their initiatives also include, after coming down off a COVID biz like everyone else, going out and meeting with businesses and educating them through vendor expos and a vendor university program, so that we continue to try to share and improve how to do business with the county. Public Defense Services, whoops. Public Defense Services. Public Defense Services is comprised of approximately a thousand talented staff across five different law offices, but yet they operate as one cohesive team, and all of them are devoted to public service. The first accomplishment that we wanted to highlight is the restoration of rights in the veterans' stand-down. Several times a year, Defense Services work with community partners to help residents with expungements and restoration of rights. Hundreds of homeless veterans receive services at the stand-down events to help them resolve any legal issues that we can. And this allows these residents to remain engaged and to become better, more productive citizens in our community. Earning a NACO award in 2022 was the Team-Based Parent Representation Program. This is a multidisciplinary team approach to representation. The team consists of the attorney, a social worker, and a peer navigator to help clients navigate the dependency process. A 2022 study by ASU, who reviewed the program, found that the cases involved with the Team-Based Parent Representation Program resulted in a much higher reunification rate between parents and their children. At this time, seventy-three percent of the cases have resulted in a successful reunification, and much of the success is really pointed to that program. So I think that is something that is truly remarkable, and they're always looking for ways of better serving their clients and getting them through the court system. Another accomplishment, the resolution of early disposition court caseload issue. We call it EDC. The backlog of court cases, you know, that developed during the pandemic, as we emerged from that and the courts came back online, there was a concerted effort to address that backlog. And so all of a sudden, there's this big, you know, surge in cases. The case volumes for EDC spiked to over ninety-two hundred cases in August of 2022. There were serious concerns that we would not be able to accept all the cases that were coming through, and this became a serious concern for both the courts and the office. So the leadership team got together and tried to figure out how are we going to address this issue? Because we don't know how long it's going to last. Is it just about this backlog, or is this an ongoing trend? The leadership team developed a very short-term, self-funded incentive pay plan for the experienced staff attorneys, as well as the contract attorneys, to be able to hopefully drive them to the EDC court that is very different than, you know, the standard case assignments. This resulted in a thirty percent more contract counsel coming to the table and helping to take those cases. It was a success. We were able to navigate it, and now those cases are leveling off, and they're back down around between five and six thousand cases, which they're used to. It was a three-month program, and it was considered a huge success. The expansion of the Mental Health Court. As you know, the expansion with Maryville and Valleywise and a new AZ Connections Pilot Program is helping to ensure that clients are receiving due process and quality representation with court-ordered treatment. These staff that specialize in this area will be participating with others during the Mental Health Expo that's planned in May. Don't know if all of you have been briefed on that. With the initiatives, they too are also pursuing a new case management system. The Just Where system that they currently have is no longer supported, and so they are in the process of implementing a new system, which is quite a huge undertaking. We expect that this new system will offer better features, more robust dashboard reporting to better gauge and manage and report out on what's going on with the caseloads, caseloads, assignments, et cetera. The building strong relationships with other counties. With the public defense offices really coming together, they're also making sure that they're real smart about reaching out to other offices, learning best practices, maintaining those relationships, and not operating in just a silo. Through the shared missions and shared best practices, the leaders participate in monthly meetings with Pinale and Pima Counties, and they participate in regular meetings with all of the public defense directors in the state. They conduct statewide training, and they host annual softball tournaments also. And they didn't tell me if they win or not, so I'll just leave that off. The dependency prevention program, which is also referred to as the Family Advocacy Support Team, or FAST, is going to be implemented this year, and it's designed to help families avoid becoming part of the child welfare system. Much like the team-based approach that I spoke about, a team provides a specific legal services to those who are at risk of dependency while also connecting parents with community For the public fiduciary, their caseloads continue to grow, they continue to be more complex. They are, and because of those complex cases with a variety of different assets, now even some of those assets are virtual. They have been partnering with the Innovation Studio on improving the whole inventory asset management program, so that they are actively ensuring that those assets are protected, managed properly. They've partnered also with St. Vincent de Paul on how to better serve populations experiencing chronic homelessness. Many of their wards are homeless, and they are doing their best to try to help them because they have multiple other issues. Some of the initiatives the Public Fiduciary's Office is pursuing is, again, a new case management system. The case management system they have is insufficient in allowing for good reporting and good dashboard measuring, and has some various concerns with accurately tracking some details that I think is important for active case management. So they are looking to implement a new case management system later this year, and they continue to strengthen relationships with Mercy Care on various housing options for their wards. Risk Management. All right. Risk Management, they have been recognized by the Industrial Commission for Innovative Assessment and Handling of COVID Workers' Compensation Claims. Basically, who knew? And so to break that down a little further, the Industrial Commission, you know, workman's compensation was directed by the Industrial Commission to consider an infectious disease as a possible work exposure, much like in the hospitals and jails. And so our workman's comp team here immediately went out and started developing a program to roll out countywide about, you know, how to do proper reporting, how to investigate, and how to accept and deny various COVID claims. And this was done rather quickly and rolled out to all of the departments, and most specifically the Sheriff's Office, CHS, and Public Health Services, so that they had that information to respond to. In March, March 17, 2020, there were four-hundred-and-ninety-five reports of COVID exposures to our employees that were received. To date, nine claims remain open, and four of the claims were accepted unfortunately due to death. The board's approval of the emergency leave plan allowed workman's comp insurance to save on indemnity payments on eighty-three percent of the claims. And this is just really the fast-acting approach that they've taken. None of the approach that they've taken. None of the workman's comp claims have resulted in being overturned. So if they've been contested, we have been successful in all of them. In fact, the Industrial Commission recognized risk for their innovative assessment and handling, and they consistently refer others to us on how we did it and explain it to them. So it was a great success, and I think they should be proud of responding quickly to something that was unprecedented and doing the best that they could, and they hit it out of the park. Risk also focuses in on safety, and they are engaging all the departments, and they are working hard to get all of the departments engaged with a safety management system. You know, it's one thing to say, safety is important. It's a whole nother thing to be actively engaged and measuring and talking and keeping that in the forefront. So our new Risk Director, Chris Caples, he'll be working with the Board of Trustees to review all the self-insured trust documents, and he and his team are working on the framework for an enterprise risk management system. Last, but certainly not least, I wanted to share a video with you to end it.
The Innovation Studio is a small but mighty department who believes in the power of people to bring positive change in the communities we serve. A couple of our recent projects have had incredible impacts.
Our sequential intercept model convened over 80 stakeholders to divert people experiencing mental illness into treatment.
We developed the most extensive SIM in the country, leading to solutions including the new mental health court unit and model at Superior Court.
Isn't that one of its awards?
Yeah, and so did our training programs, which scaled the adoption of our continuous improvement methods countywide.
We also facilitated strategic planning, convening 95 county leaders from 26 departments and eight elected offices. The working groups generated 15 county-level goals and 70 department objectives.
These are amazing accomplishments. Cost savings, employees trained, almost 100% of departments engaged. But there is always room for continuous improvement, even for us. Tell me, what is innovation? Is it technology? Is it an idea? Or is it process improvement?
It's data and knowing how we're performing at all times.
I think it's about improving service experience.
It's also connecting with mindset, meeting our clients where they are in their operations.
It's about activating your creativity.
And all of it won't be very effective without change management.
It's all those things. And this year, we're revamping our program model to make continuous improvement and service design projects more effective and collaborative. Our new program model will deliver.
Transparency.
Integration.
Simplicity.
Quick wins.
A shared understanding.
And actionable improvements. All right, that's a wrap. Hey, team, for something fun, how about a show of our team spirit, like a dance?
I don't know.
I am out.
Come on, guys.
I'm on dance.
Guys, let everyone go. Come on. Hmm. I've got this.
And that concludes the presentation today.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Jack.
Well, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know you're getting close to a hard stop for you, but I just want to thank you and the staff. What an amazing update. And with all the noise we've had over the last several years, it's easy for us even to overlook the exceptional work that all of our county departments do that is the reason why we're the fastest-growing county in the United States. I mean, it's unbelievable, the outstanding services that we provide, and I wish that the entire population could see what we just saw. So thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you for putting this item on. I agree with everything that Jack said. And the other thing that I would point to is, I kept hearing again and again in these presentations, tying the work back to the strategic plan that this board has set forth, working with the team. So that's great to see. It's not just, it's not just great work, but it's the work that this board is focused on. And so thank you, Joy and the whole team, for that. Great presentations.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Hopefully, this is a record viewership, because I hope that people really got to see today exactly what's going on in all these different lines of business in the county, and not just how hard people are working, but how they're executing on a daily basis. Thank you.
Before I say, Joy, if you have something to say, and then I'll wrap it up.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say how very proud I am of this organization, these people that you see out here. To me, we have an A-plus team, and I just couldn't be prouder to have had the opportunity to be a member of that team. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, I picked out some people in the audience, and I'm just going to pick out a couple more, because I didn't get a chance, but Darcy is here, Tom, Jesse, Laura, Fields, RJ, Kevin, all of you guys that do such a spectacular job, basically almost unsung heroes. And if I have to get it on a YouTube thing that somebody might watch on a late Sunday evening as they doom scroll through Twitter, they can see just exactly what kind of passion goes into these jobs. And I can almost feel it here also, you know, just on a weekend with phone calls, that are we going to get into executive session and talk about these nine items? And, you know, we can feel it here, like, we got to hustle up and get in there. That's what we've been doing for, it seems, almost like two years. Like, we've got to really get in and get talking about some of these other things. And then we don't get a chance to display to the county, you know, the county taxpayer, just what all of you guys are doing, and best in class, best in show, best in everything that we get to use. And then I get to reflect on it during a budget cycle. You know, how are we going to fund these types of it? What are you guys up to? What have you done? What are you doing? So that's why I wanted to just like, I don't care. It's a Monday. We're going to sit here and see just everything that you guys have done and why you guys make us all proud. So with that, Joy, spectacular leadership team, I can feel it. You got your, I'd always say top dogs at the ranch, but the top people sitting here, represented by their staff that they go to, that get the jobs done also, as a solid team that's developed under your leadership, developing, and then furthermore, finding the stars that get the jobs done and comport to the strategic vision of this board. So thank you. With that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session.
Thank you, Jack. I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will go into executive session. Thanks again for everybody.